They called this meeting to order at seven seventeen P M. Madam third vocal.
Councilmember Mendota?
Here.
Councilmember Oviedo Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Tucker?
Here.
Mayor Protim Ofcuna?
Here.
And Mayor Murillo? Here.
When everybody will stand for the pledge of allegiance. What's wrong? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its人民共和国 which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Murillo, do you have any adjustments to the agenda?
Madam Mayor, yes. And placed on the, your next meeting agenda for July nineteenth. Also with respect to the action portion of the calendar, we would ask that items B four through B nine be placed removed from consent and placed on the action portion of your agenda. I, I, I would ask that that matter be taken up first on the action agenda. We have our consultant, Mr. Koppel, who will be available. So I think it'd be most convenient if we could take him first. And so he could address questions that the council has specifically with respect to how that impacts what people will be paying compared to last year. And also in that regard, I, I, I live in Savannah Ranch and so I would have a conflict and so I'm not going to participate in, in that matter.
Do you have a motion for the adjustments to the agenda?
Second.
I have a motion and second, please vote. Motion carries five zero. Ms. Turner, do we have any report on closed session actions?
Yes, the council did discuss one item in closed session, which is existing litigation and direction was given to council. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Moving on to public comment. There's a limit of three minutes for anyone who to wish the city council and matters not appearing on the agenda. Do we have any public comments for tonight? Please step up to the podium. State your name. Yes. And if you could state your name and address for the record.
Sure, sure. My name's Leonardo Regolato. Address is three sixty two Jack Rabbit Drive here in Central. Like I mentioned, my name's Leo and I'm actually a committee chair. I'm not really dressed to part today. But I'm the committee chair for troop forty seventy. We meet out here at the VFW on Tuesday nights. And I just thank you for the support that we've received from the city. And some of our boys are in need of conservation hours. I know in the past that we've worked helping out with either be fencing or painting or whatever that's needed within the city limits. So please keep us in mind. We do ask a four to six week heads up just so that we could put it in our calendar and make it available to our boys that, hey, this is coming up. Sign up for it because I know it's a great program that we have and what it continues making, you know, young boys into productive men of, of our society. So, but yeah, thank you again for the support. And that's, and we're here because he's working on the merit badge. So he's he has to stay at a committee meeting. So that's what we're here for. So, but thank you.
Thank you and thank you for your continued support in the community.
In, in terms of timing, four to six weeks would put us in late August, early September. I, and if you're going to be working outside, would you prefer something later in the year or does it, or does it matter?
We'll do it early in the morning.
Okay.
For the summary ride. But that's just a heads up for us. If it's out two months, three months, even better because that's, I know it starts cooling down around here. So, but normally we do ask for some leeway so that we do put it on our, on our calendar and make it available for the scouts to, to make themselves available to help out. So. But yeah, it is hot. We get that. So we will start early or if we push it to September, Octoberish, then that's a different story. So, but please keep us in mind.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Moving on to item A, special presentations for A one Parks and Recreation Month.
Madam Mayor, Madam has put together a brief slideshow, just kind of generalizing what we do on an yearly basis in Parks and Rec. And whenever IT is ready, we can go ahead and start that slide. So I will say about, about putting this together, it, although you see a few slides, it took the staff and a lot of time looking through the thousands and thousands of pictures that we, we have from every single event, every year for summer programs. And it was very hard to narrow down a handful of pictures to describe what my team does. But I'm very appreciative of them and the everyday hard work that they put in to, to make these things happen for our community.
So I just want to, before I read this proclamation, I want to say thank you as your mayor for all the hard work that you guys do. And then also as a resident and parent of the city of Imperial who puts her kids in these Parks and Recs programs. For me during the summer, they're a lifesaver because I have somewhere to help me for childcare. And I know I get a lot of positive feedback from other parents as well. So it's an affordable way for us parents when we have that little bit of childcare gap when school's non-session. So I just want to say we're really appreciative. And so this is the declaration for designation of July as Parks and Rec Month, whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Imperial. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of all community members. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders and Alzheimer's. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designated to, or designed to promote active lifestyle. And whereas Parks and Recreation is a leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition, services, and education. And whereas Parks and Recreation programming and education activities such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education are critical to childhood development. And whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U S House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas the City of Imperial Council recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Now there be resolved by the city council of the city of Imperial that July is recognized as Park and Recreation Month in the city of Imperial. Do you have any comments from the council?
Well. Tony, I'll chime off with the, what Mayor said. Thank you guys very much for all the hard work that you guys put into a city. It doesn't go unnoticed. You know, we can see the, the hard work that goes into all our events by just watching the people that come in from other cities, other neighboring communities to attend our events and programs. I know that I like to go to our summer camps and summer activities that we do and usually talk to people and figure out where they're coming from. And not all of them are coming from Imperial. It's nice to hear they're coming from other towns because they enjoy our program. So it's a, this goes to show how, how good we do things here. And for our park staff, you know, thank you guys for all the hard work. I know up until today, we didn't know what was going, you know, things that happened. But thank you guys very much for everything you guys do. Appreciate it.
Again, just kind of mirroring what Mayor Protim said. It's a, I don't think people in the public realize the, the wide variety of jobs and activities and everything that a small staff puts on. And whenever, once being on council, you know, I mean, I was always just an attendee. Now being here and seeing the amount of work goes in, you, you'd be amazed at the amount of work. And just what's, what's the old saying, jack of all trades? That we have a complete staff that are jack of all trades because you'd be amazed at all the different work that they do in a twenty-four hour period just to put on an event or, you know, help out in different projects and so forth. So my true thank you to all the staff and, and, and bravo to all of you.
We could thank you guys enough. I mean, Imperial's known for having great market days. That's not done lightly or easily. It's thanks to your guys' department and all the hard work that the employees do. And it takes a lot of work. It takes a lot of work, I mean, and just like Stacy was saying, now that we're on this side and we have the chance to see behind the scenes, it's amazing. Everything that you guys do from the lighting to the cleanup, to the setup and to the takedown, um, for just one event. And you guys put on multiple events, and so we're very appreciative um, of all that you guys do. Along with everything else besides your regular jobs that you have to do, so. From me and my family who thoroughly enjoy all the events, we thank you all.
Then we'll move on to consent agenda, um, all items appearing under consent agenda will be acted upon by the City Council with one motion without discussion. Should any council member or other person request that any item be considered separately, then that item will be taken up as time. As determined by the mayor, do you have a motion to approve the consent and agenda with the adjustments for Mr. Marita?
I'll make a motion.
Do you have a second? I have a motion by Mendoza and a second by Obeso Martinez, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Now we're gonna move on to the action items with being at the top of the action will be item B four. Um, Community Phil- Sil- Community Facilities District's number two thousand four dash zero one for Victoria Ranch. With Ms. Brown? Or Mr. Marita?
Uh, Madam Mayor, members of the council, um, I do, I will defer to our uh, consultant, um, Mr. Koppel. Uh, who I believe has joined us via Zoom, um, that will be able to speak more to items B four and B nine and answer those questions that you may have.
Good afternoon, council and staff, this is Scott Koppel with the firm Koppel and Grover Public Finance, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. Um, I believe there might have been some questions on if the rates or what we're doing with the rates here. So as a brief explanation for this CFD and it's true for all five of the CFDs. There's two rates that we're asking the council to approve tonight, there's um, in. Of the larger rate, which is for the infrastructure that was put in place when the CFDs were formed. Um, and then there's a services component that gets billed each year. For this specific CFD, um, we are billing at a, um, a little bit less than the maximum rate. But it's approximately the same amount uh, as last year for the infrastructure portion. For the services portion, that rate is allowed to go up by CPI each year. And so that service portion rate um, is being increased by the change in CPI from last year.
I guess a question I also had for um, thank you, Mr. Koppel, but a question I had for John is, um, we would, I think. I know I have and I think some other council members may have received some questions from the public about the increase in the rates. And I just wanted to know if we can get some kind of explanation on, um, for public purposes of. What is it that, how is it that the rate increase is determined and what happened last year that we're now having to go. Uh, with an increase, was it a cola or what is it that caused that rate increase on? I believe there's three of them, it went up, one of them stayed the same and two of them it actually went down.
Uh, y- yes, council member, um, the um, as uh, our consultant, Scott Koppel just mentioned. Uh, we are not increasing the rates other than the cost of living adjustment that's been standard practice. Uh, in the past few years for the Victoria, we're going from a hundred and thirteen thousand four hundred. Uh, for the services component, uh, uh, increasing that by eight point seven percent. For a total of one hundred and twenty-three thousand two seventy-five in the new fiscal year twenty twenty-four. And then the um, the facilities component is actually going down slightly from four hundred and forty thousand eight thirty-two. Down to four hundred and thirty-seven, uh, four hundred and thirty-seven thousand four oh seven ninety. Um, the, that's mostly driven by bond payments and, and related costs, um, but the um. The, 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 the thing that we're doing differently this year for the first time, um, since formation of all of these districts, not just Victoria. Is that we have implemented a, um, um, a more uh, detailed cost accounting. So that now we have, um, we have created a separate fund in our accounting system. For each of the six uh, CFDs. And at the end of the fiscal year, June thirtieth of each fiscal year, we will be reserving the fund balance. So that we know how much of the fund balance on June thirtieth is for available for uh, services versus facilities. And when we do the levy, uh, for the assessments, uh, sorry, in this case, we're talking about special taxes for the new fiscal year. Um, they're based on the true cost of operations for the coming year. Um, of all of the CFDs that we have implemented, I don't believe there was anything that was extraordinary as far as cost increases. They're all just following the standard uh, consumer price index, uh, consumer pri- price index increase of eight point seven percent. As Scott just mentioned, um, does that answer your question then?
I, I believe it does, I just, like I said, I think it, uh, we, this was gonna be on consent agenda where there would be no discussion. And I think considering we are looking at an increase, I thought it warranted at least a little bit of discussion. So the members of the public could know why their assessment would be potentially going up.
Yes, ma'am, as a matter of fact, in the coming fiscal year, uh, if there's ever any questions, uh, on whether we're talking about the CFDs. Or the L O M Bs, um, lighting or landscaping, um, you can send them to my office, I'd be happy to meet with them because. I have very good cost accounting records now, uh, Scott Koppel and his firm helped me to put together. Um, what I think is a really good uh, um, uh, um, cost structure and, and, and report that we have now. I'll be happy to discuss that with any of the uh, taxpayers or assessment payers.
Thank you.
I would just like to add from an individual property owner, the amount of the services component of the special tax is going up by approximately sixteen dollars. From last year to this year. Per, per year.
Correct. Thank you for that.
Have any other questions from the council? No? Do we have a motion?
Now that we've pulled them, do we have to go one at a time?
Yeah, a- actually, and I just wanna advise everyone, in addition to that, we may have a few people who live in these, they will be stepping out, just like Mr. Marita. Um, for that individual vote, so if you could do, take them in order one at a time and allow people to just quickly get up based on their living situation.
I'll make a motion. On Community Facilities District number two zero zero four dash zero one.
Second.
Do a motion and a second, uh, roll call vote, or do we fix this?
Madam Mayor, I'll do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Obeso Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Amparano?
Yes.
And Mayor Burnworth?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve, uh, the resolution determining levying special taxes for. The Facilities District number two zero zero four dash three for Bratton Development.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, roll, I have a motion and a second, roll call vote. Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Obeso Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Amparano?
Yes.
And Mayor Burnworth?
Yes.
For item B six. Community Phil- Facilities District number two thousand six dash zero one for Monterey, do I have a motion and a second?
I'll make, make motion to approve Community Facility District number two thousand six dash zero one Monterey.
I have a motion by Tucker and a second by Mendoza, um, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please. Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Amparano?
Yes.
And Mayor Burnworth?
Yes. Do I, do I mention her abstention or does she?
Yeah, it's abstention, mention it.
Okay.
And Councilmember Obeso Martinez will be abstaining from the vote. Moving on to B seven, Community Facilities District's number two thousand four dash two for Mayfield, do you have a motion and a second?
For, um, number two zero zero four dash two?
Second.
I have a motion by Obeso Martinez and a second by Tucker, please vote. Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Obeso Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor, um, Protim Amparano?
Yes.
And Mayor Burnworth?
Yes.
Moving on to B eight, Community Facility District's number two thousand five dash one for Springfield, do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to. District. Oh, five dash one Springfield?
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
The motion by Tucker and a second by Mendoza, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please. Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Obeso Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Amparano?
Yes.
And Mayor Burnworth?
Yes.
Moving on to B nine, Community Facilities District two thousand six dash two for Savannah Ranch.
I'll make a motion. Facility District number two thousand six dash two Savannah Ranch.
I have a motion and a second, Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please. Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Obeso Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Tucker?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Amparano?
Yes.
And Mayor Burnworth?
Yes.
Moving on to item C one, now that we have everybody back. Um, municipal budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, um, staff report with the city manager Dennis Marita. And John Herrera, our interim finance director.
Madam Mayor and council, uh, if you have any further questions, we, obviously. A little bit earlier, we had a workshop and, and hopefully addressed, um, uh, your questions in a manner that would, uh. Al- allow you to move forward with adoption of the budget, the only thing I would suggest is that assuming you do move forward with adoption of the resolution. That if in, if there are changes made to any of the resolutions that are to come. That, that the budget you approve is amended to, to incorporate those changes, uh, that, that come later on in the agenda.
Make a motion to approve with, to the, I'll make a. Make a motion to approve the uh, municipal budget fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. For the adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three, adopting municipal budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. With amendments to come, uh, further in the agenda if needed. Second there.
The motion by Amparano and a second by Tucker, uh, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Make a motion to adopt, uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four, adopting appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. With any, uh, amendments that need to happen.
I have a motion by Amparano and a second by Tucker, please vote. Motion carries five zero. Moving on to item C two, approval of resolution number twenty twenty-three, twenty dash twenty-five. To adopt a memorandum of understanding between the City of Imperial and Teamsters Local Union. Number five four two for the term of three fiscal years, um, staff report with Ms. Smith.
Uh, good evening, um, so presented before you is the uh, resolution twenty twenty-three, twenty-five. To adopt the memorandum of understanding between the City of Imperial, Teamsters Union, five forty-two. Uh, for fiscal years twenty-three, twenty-four through twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, the city completed the meet and confer process with Teamsters, uh, and came to an agreement on adjustments outlined within the staff report. Uh, with the temporary agreement signed on June twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, uh, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Questions from the council? Motion?
I'll make a motion, resolution twenty twenty-three, adopt the.
I have a motion by Mendoza and a second by Amparano, uh, please vote. Motion carries five zero. Uh, moving on to item C three, approval of resolution number twenty twenty-three, touch twenty-six, adopt a memorandum. Of understanding between City of Imperial and Imperial Police Officers Association for a term of three years, uh, staff report with Ms. Smith.
Um, and again, um, the resolution twenty twenty-three, twenty-six for adoption of the, uh, memorandum of understanding. Uh, between the City of Imperial and the Imperial Police Officers Association, uh, for fiscal years twenty-three, twenty-four through twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh, for your consideration, um, and the city again completed the meet and confer process with IPOA. And came to an agreement on the adjustments outlined within the staff report with the temporary agreement signed on June twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. And, um, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Make a motion to. In twenty, this twenty-six, adopt a memorandum. For Police Officers Association.
I have a motion by Amparano and a second by Obeso Martinez, uh, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
And C four, approval of resolution number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven. Adopting terms related to compensation and benefits for unrepresented employee class classifications, again with Kristen Smith, our HR manager.
Uh, presented, uh, for your consideration is resolution twenty twenty-three, twenty-seven to address compensation and benefits for unrepresented staff. Uh, which would be comparable to what has been offered to other represented employees, uh, for fiscal years twenty-three, twenty-four through twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, this resolution also clarifies the classification designations under FLSA exempt and non-exempt employment status. Um, and additional details are outlined in the staff report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions or a motion?
Quick to clarify, we're going. Okay, sorry, my bad. I just cut myself. Lot of numbers, I'll make a motion to adopt, uh, re- resolution twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three, twenty-seven. Establishing benefits with MSPC, unrepresented employees in the City of Imperial. I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, please vote.
Yeah, that was a good one.
Motion carries five zero.
Uh, moving on to C five, adopt resolution approving agreement between the City of Imperial and Dennis H. Marita. To serve as a city manager for a term of three years with Ms. Turner, Mrs. Turner.
Um, Dennis Marita, uh, was working under a contract that, uh, was for a total of three years, which recently came due for a renewal.
for a renewal, and so what is presented in front of you is an additional three years. Uh it's listed almost identical as before, except the base salary right now is a hundred and ninety thousand. Plus, there would be um similar COLAs merits um almost equivalent, which are outlined in full. Uh the total compensation package, when you total every benefit together is two hundred and fifty-four thousand six hundred dollars per year. Um and it would last for three years, so.
Have a motion or s- in a second?
Motion to approve. Um the agreement between the City of Imperial and Mr. Dennis Marita, number twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight.
Second.
I have a motion by Obaso Martinez and a second by Tucker, please vote. Motion carries five zero. You can look up now, Dennis. By no relief to you, you have the next item, which is C six, first amendment to interim chief of police agreement. And he now will not look up either.
Yes, Madam Mayor and council, as we, as we all learned the hard way in the course of of bringing on uh Chief Crankshaw as as interim, there are pretty severe limitations on what we can do compensation wise. Uh one thing we can do though is uh is that KALPERS allows us to uh adjust compensation uh as as we would for uh our uh a permanent chief. And so what you have before you is an adjustment to the uh current contract uh to uh reflect uh the uh s- uh the increase uh that uh is proposed for uh the employee groups and others.
Second.
I have a motion by Amparano and a second by Tucker, please vote.
Pass the baton.
Motion carries five zero.
A warm in here, right?
C seven, resolution regarding compensations and benefits for the Imperial City Council's staff report, uh Mrs. Turner.
Hey, what is presented before you, um which was prepared by me and staff, is um two separate items. The first one is a resolution and it relates to benefits. So the California law does allow council members to get benefits that don't exceed the benefits that are given to employees um within the city. So what we have put together um and presented right now is a resolution that allows you to get health and welfare benefits right now. Uh we've only written down um the health insurance portion of that. And we did, it's it will likely be less than what is given to employees, but we thought it would only be done through reimbursement, so if you get the health insurance um another way, but this authorizes it because unless you've done a resolution, you can't qualify for any of those benefits and uh when we were doing our review, currently the council gets zero benefits um right now. So this would authorize uh right now health insurance, or if you wanted to add some of the other benefits. The second item yeah is related to your pay. Um right now, uh you get three hundred and sixty dollars each per month and that was done in two thousand and two. We compared it to the other cities and you are far less than those. Um so we did the calculation, which is allowed under the law and it allows it to go up to seven hundred and twenty dollars, which is less than some of our other cities right now. Um but also I want it to be very clear that this does not go into effect until the next election. So even though you would take action today to increase it to this maximum, um it would, that the second portion, the ordinance uh would not go into effect for a couple of years. If you have any questions, it's it's, no, obviously we can't talk to everyone ahead of time, so we presented these two. Um but if you have any question about what the law allows, let me know.
Have any comments or questions from the council? Uh do I have a motion?
Allowable um approving it to read for the city council to get health and welfare benefits equivalent to a full-time employee?
Sure, yeah. And and so what, in order to, in in order to do that, uh the resolution would right remain almost the same, but then on the list will say city council benefits equivalent to the employees. Um we would have to look at each one um to to make sure, because council could never get reimbursement. So for instance, if if employees waive health insurance, they get a four, they have the option of getting um a cash stipend, you can't do that. So we would say up to the maximum of what they can get. And and typically it's reimbursement, not other things, so. And some of our plans don't allow you to join. But we, I do recommend that if you want to include that, it would be in the attachment A, city council benefits in equivalent to the full-time employees.
Do we need to take this under two separate actions?
I do recommend that you do it, the one, one is the resolution with the change, the second is the ordinance, which would not require any changes.
Second then.
Yes, either order is fine.
Do action one for, not for your motion.
So I'll make a motion to amend action one to say um city council employees provided the health and welfare benefits equivalent to a full-time employee.
That's what I said.
I have a motion by Obaso Martinez and a second by Tucker, please vote. Motion carries five zero. Do you have a motion for the recommended second action?
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading entitled only of ordinance number eight twenty-seven, amending the codified ordinances of the City of Imperial, adjusting Imperial City Council compensation to seven hundred and twenty dollars.
Second.
I'll second that, I like the way she said it.
I have a motion by Mendoza, second. Motion carries five zero. On to item C eight, removal of outstanding library fines for the Imperial Public Library with Denise Olet. Did I mess up your last name?
Like, that's fine, Ulet, thank you. Uh we were requesting that we remove outstanding library fines and eliminate the current overdue overdue fee policy for the Imperial Public Library. This was approved by our library board and we would ask that you would approve it as well. Did you have any questions?
Why is this?
Okay, uh research shows that um overdue fines disproportionately affect low-income patrons and families with children and create a socioeconomic barrier to information access. Currently at the Imperial Public Library, children's materials account for seventy percent of our total circulation. And if we are to remove this policy, we'd be the first library in the Imperial Valley to institute such a policy and we would hope to lead the way for other libraries to do as well.
I think when I looked at the um the backup for it, it sounds like we spend more money trying to get our fines than like it doesn't make sense.
Absolutely, a five to ten minute conversation to get a dollar back, so. And and major libraries, San Diego County, Los Angeles County, all of them have done cost-benefit analysis and it's just not worth it. And we're not here to nickel and dime our citizens, the goal is to get the materials back. And so it makes much more sense to just ask people to return their items and then they can't get anymore if they don't return them. It's just a one-for-one thing, so it's punitive, fines, fines are outdated.
Alright, thank you so much, uh.
If I could, we we had a discussion of this in El Centro, also where we it was found that people are almost fear that as much as they love to read and want to go to the library because they know that they have a fine, they suspect people realize who they are and they have a fine and we find that they're not going to the library. And the whole purpose is to keep them coming to the library and reading. So it was, we're going through the same thing in El Centro, trying to eliminate these and not just um waive them, but to eliminate them, because they say if you waive them, they still think, well, that fine's still there and they still know. And so by completely eliminating, it's like starting with a clean slate and.
It's very akin to marijuana laws where you sponge the record. They're so relieved, and I have to tell you, as a librarian over thirty years, the first thing people say to me in airports is, oh my god, I have an overdue library book. So I would be, it'd be nice to go forward and, but you have to, you know.
Do you, do you think eliminating the fines is gonna bring majority of our books back?
You know, what we're talking about really is the lateness, and so currently uh books check out for three weeks and they are renewed two more times, so they get two full months. So that gives people the relief to be able to bring it, it extends their time that they have it. And as I said, most per, it disproportionately affects families, so people that check out stacks of children's books, you know, and they can't find them all and there's something that's overdue. The goal is just to get them back, and so we're not really in the business of of of, you know, punishing them for for their lateness, we just really want the books returned, so.
I have a motion and.
I wanna make that motion since I brought that subject up. Approval removal of outstanding library fines for the Imperial Public Library.
I have a motion by Tucker and a second by Amparano, please vote. Motion carries five zero. Moving on to item C nine, appointment of appointment of one representative to the Imperial Valley Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. And that stays with the council. I would like to recommend Matthew Smith to the Imperial Valley Housing Authority Board of Commissioners.
Do we have any different people here that would like to speak?
Hello, uh Matthew Smith, uh the applicant, uh I just wanna say thank you Mayor Burnworth for the recommendation uh and for all members of the council for reading my application and your consideration, thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Oh, I have a motion and a second, please vote. Motion carries five zero. On to uh D reports to D one department reports, do I have any department reports tonight? Being none, perfect, move on to city manager report.
Just very briefly, Mayor and council, thank, thank you for the action you took with respect to ex- extending uh my contract. Um I also wanna thank staff uh for all the hard work that went into uh preparing the budget. As as John indicated to the group several times during our our meetings concerning the budget. City of Imperial is a multi-million dollar operation. And so uh uh I I believe that uh staff gave the budget the attention it deserved and and will continue to do so as we uh plow plow forward into this into this fiscal year. And and thank you for your attention and participation. Uh it's it's, yeah. Uh the job isn't over, the job is really kinda starting, if I could just say with respect to uh implementing uh the priorities uh that uh uh you worked so hard to develop. Thank you, appreciate it.
Ms. Obaso Martinez, do you have any, do you have anything to report?
Um like Mr. Regalado mentioned, Boy Scouts still meet during the summer, so if you have some boys who need something to do during the summer, they do have meetings and they will be back in like real troop meetings in September, August. The school year on Tuesday, seven PM, so get your boys something to do, they go camp. Robert knows, I know, we've been camping plenty and kayaking with the boys and then some. Um in other news, my my other hat that I wear, Hermanitas with Mana de Imperial Valley has scholarship, not scholarship, excuse me. They are providing um Hermanitas um program this summer as well, that will be extended through October. So it's kinda leadership and um lot of different opportunities for young women. If they want to apply, they can go to the website and it's all free to them and it's really good, free um information from college pathways to leadership to health, um advocacy, a lot of good things and um they'll have a, oh my gosh, I'm having a brain, sorry, it's the end of the day. Um they can also have a mentorship with the local um influential women here in Imperial Valley as well. So ivmana.org, if you guys want more information with for that.
Um council member Tucker, do you have anything to report?
I'm good, thank.
Council member Mendoza, do you have anything to report?
Nothing to report.
Uh Mayor Pro Tim Amparano.
Yeah, um I got to attend our, and I got it wrong again, the movie night at the pool. Yeah, that movie dive, I don't, I don't know what it is. Uh remember the name, but it was very well attended, there was quite a bit of people there. Um got to see one of my favorite movies, Moana, and so. No, it 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 it, I'm sitting there singing the song and all that good stuff, cause I really like it. I mean Stacy was there with us and having ice cream, watching the kids play around in the pool, so it was actually a good event. Uh really enjoyed it, weather was favorable that day, so staff, thank you guys very much for the hard work you guys put into it, so. Other than that, um to all city staff, thank you for the hard work on the budget, I know that it was, it was a long process, you know, we started a long time ago, so. Hey, there's always a light at the end of the tunnel, so thank you guys for your hard work, keep up the good work, thank you.
Thank you, and with that, I just wanna tell all of our staff, um thank you for all the hard work you guys put into the budget. Um I know as a council, we have, you know, probably some high expectations, or maybe some of you guys even call them unrealistic, but I think um you know, you guys all always show, put a lot of effort into it, you know, when we have requests, they're usually really um handled very quickly, and so I hope that our appreciation shows in your guys' labor negotiations. Um as a way to show you that you guys are appreciated, um we do hear you. We wanna make sure that the City of Imperial is somewhere that we pay all of our employees a healthy, you know, not a healthy or a livable wage, if that makes sense, I know there's other um agencies within the county that are having struggles doing that. And I just wanna know, like, the City of Imperial won't be that place, so you are appreciated and it's not just saying thank you. It's showing it um as well, so with that, um I hope everybody has a great rest of the week and doesn't stay doesn't or stays cool, so. Um with that, um I'll adjourn this regular meeting of the city council until next regularly scheduled meeting held on Wednesday, July nineteenth at seven PM. And this meeting's adjourned at eight oh eight PM.